Welcome to another meeting of the Lorraine County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorraine County Community College Education Station. The Lorraine County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meeting live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorraine County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Alariah. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the October 18th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Vacy is absent today because of a serious illness in her family. I would like to observe a moment of silence as our country moves forward and ask that you offer whatever positive thoughts you can for those who are in a position to be making decisions. And my calendar for today, I can't even pronounce the man's name, but it is a good thought, I think. He says, "It is a bad plan that allows no room for modification."
This is David Moore. It's gonna be a real good day.
I even have a better one. I walk to the corner in the morning to get the newspaper and there's a church on the way and it has this sign posted and it says, "Plan ahead. It wasn't raining when Noah built the ark."
Yep.
The first item on the agenda is a report from the Lamp Oversight Committee. We had a public hearing this morning and we reviewed the request of Myra Burgos to expand her current business. Am I? Yeah, I'm at the right time. And she's making application for a $20,000 loan. Does Melanie want to speak to this? Melanie, our Economic Development Specialist, Melanie Long? Good morning, Melanie.
Good morning. I'm Melanie Long, L-O-N-G, from Community Development. This morning, we had an application to the Oversight Committee for Myra Burgos, who is the proprietor for the Myra's Corner Store, which is on the corner of 18th and Washington in Lorraine, Ohio. The loan request was for $20,000 and Ms. Burgos is here now. She would like to say something.
I would like to hear from her. Good morning, Myra. Come on up to the microphone, introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your business, which sounds very exciting and I'm also commending you for being such a hard worker.
Good morning. My name is Myra Burgos and I just opened up the store in June on the corner of 18th and Long, Washington, I'm sorry. It's 1760 Washington Avenue. It's like a grandfather grocery store. We provide everybody's basic necessities for emergencies. So, I just want to thank everybody. I'm kinda nervous. This is shocking to me. I just got off of my other job, so I really want to thank everybody for hearing me out and Melanie, thank you.
And what are the hours at your corner store?
At my corner store, we open from 10:00 in the morning and we're there until 10:00 in the evening.
Very good.
We're there Monday through Saturday and then on Sundays, we open from 11:00 to 6:00. So, I hope to see you guys there.
Sounds very exciting.
Thank you.
The only other thing, in her business plan, she says she had penny candy and I haven't been in. I've been in, but I didn't buy any penny candy. I want to see this, because I haven't seen penny candy. I think in my whole life.
Well, that just shows how young you are. I remember the corner store where my grandma lived and that's how they got rid of me when they wanted to visit. They gave me money to go down to the, it's on the corner, 23rd and Reed, I think. It's an empty lot now, but that was my favorite spot in Lorraine. Anything else, Melanie? Okay. That was the recommendation of the committee that we approved this loan?
Yes, it was the recommendation of the committee to approve the loan to Myra Burgos for $20,000.
All right. Are there questions or comments? Okay. I will move that we accept the recommendation of the committee and approve the loan as outlined.
And I'll second.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next, we have a proclamation for El Centro. Is Crystal Lado here? Crystal, would you like to come forward to the microphone and I'll read this? This is in the matter congratulating El Centro on their 27th anniversary gala celebrations honoring the hand that gave, whereas in 1974, El Centro de Servicio, I can't say that. Servicios. Thank you. Was incorporated as a private nonprofit corporation with a staff of four and now employs over 20. And whereas El Centro has focused on a most commendable mission, enhancing the socioeconomic status of the Hispanic and greater Lorraine community by the provisions of basic human services, community education, employment, and advocacy services on behalf of the Hispanic community. And whereas the cooperation and efforts of the clergy, political, and community leaders, they have provided direct service to over 30,000 youth, adults, and senior citizens from throughout Lorraine County, Cleveland, and Ohio. And whereas El Centro, Lorraine's only Hispanic social service agency, has been providing services, its many services programs such as, and it lists them all, and therefore, the Board of Commissioners is congratulating El Centro on your 27th anniversary gala celebration at the Lorraine Party Center on Friday, October 26. And this board further honors the mission of El Centro through the implementation of a multitude of programs and services which address the needs of youth, adult, and senior communities. I would like to give this to you, Crystal, and then maybe you would just like to briefly mention some of the services you perform rather than me reading them, which I think would be much more appropriate.
Thank you very much. On behalf of El Centro staff and board, I thank you for this recognition. We're very proud to be able to provide services for 27 years. I hope to see you there and celebrate with us on the 26th of October. We provide services such as, we have seven programs and three sites. Our seven programs are money management, which is a program that provides paid shift services to the chronically mentally ill, domestic violence, employment, housing, information, and advocacy, as well as seniors and youth programs.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. 27 years goes by real fast. Is Greg Johnson here? Okay. Oh, good morning.
Good morning.
We have a little memento for you. It's a certificate of appreciation presented to the Lorraine County Urban League for your Minority Career Fair, which is being held Friday, October 19th, tomorrow, at the college from 8:00 to 11:00. It says there will be numerous employers with openings, workshops, and counseling forums to be sponsored by Invacare, May Credit, and First Merit. This event gives many Lorraine County residents an opportunity to broaden their horizons.
Thank you very much.
Board of Commissioners would like to give this to you and you have some comments that you'd like.
Sure.
Welcome to our Urban League meeting.
Truly my privilege to stand before you this morning. Hey, Ron. The Urban League, I am the interim president and CEO of the Lorraine County Urban League. We've been working hard to increase and improve our services to the Lorraine County area. The same day that we will be having this Minority Career Fair, we will have what is known as the Equal Opportunity Day Luncheon. The luncheon and the equal opportunity theme supports that we have many riches in this county that we need to appreciate. Paying attention to difference works against us. Appreciating difference and valuing difference is really what the Urban League is all about. And we thank you for this recognition.
And we thank you for coming this morning, Greg.
Have you, Greg, have you talked to our Community Development Director? Because we created a, Betty and I created this economic development package for minority, like your fair would be perfect for us. There's some money available, up to $2,500, to help offset any costs that your group has putting on this fair. I mean, have you talked to Ron about that yet?
Ron and I have had many conversations. We've not had that one yet. We will have.
I noticed the "yet" part.
Because I know you already have it scheduled to come out, but if there's some costs there that we can offset, because this is the kind of stuff that we were promoting here as a board.
Thank you very much.
To help offset other groups that are out there trying to promote employment and fairs like this.
Thank you very much.
Please make a point to see Ron.
Okay, Ron.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you again. Madam Clerk?
Okay, on a resolutions, I need a motion to approve the Job and Family Services Bills for Payment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
There are no advances today. Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approving bills for payment?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
I'd authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdictions of the Lorraine County Commissioners.
Are we going to need an executive session today?
Yes, I'll be requesting executive session for the express purpose of discussing any labor contract which has been misaligned to the sunshine law.
Okay. Do we want to hold this?
We might as well.
Okay. So, we'll hold the sheet until after the executive session. Thank you.
I'd like to approve the contract amendment between the Board of Commissioners and the Department of Job and Family Services to change the name of the county ombudsman from Dr. Ballard, who has resigned, to Larry Allen, and to decrease the value of the contract to reflect the wage of the new ombudsman. The value of the contract will be adjusted from $10,519.82 to $4,049.14, which is a nine-month contract from October 8th, 2001 through June 30th, 2002.
I'll so moved.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Commissioners, I would request that we table this issue. I did not have opportunity to review this contract matter until this morning. I'm not sure that I'm in agreement with the contract that came over from Job and Family Services. I have not had opportunity to discuss the matter with Mary Lou, so I would ask that we just hold up on this for a week or two until I feel more comfortable with it.
Having said, I will withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. But I would like to take the opportunity to introduce Mr. Allen to the group of individuals who are here and to the public again. So Larry, would you just like, make a little trip to the microphone and introduce yourself and your new position with Lorraine County?
Yeah, my name is Larry Allen, A-L-L-E-N. I'm the county ombudsman. My office is here at the Administration Building, 329-5488. You can reach me there. If you have any questions, you can contact me and I'll see what I can do to help you out.
Thank you very much.
Numbers don't look right, do they?
What's that, sir?
Numbers don't look right, do they?
Well, it's not just the numbers, it's the amount of hours. The contract is stating that not to exceed five hours in a week and I'm not sure.
I thought it was 20.
I'm not sure it's suitable and not all the benefits are addressed. There's no funding for healthcare and so forth. So, I just want to feel more comfortable with the issue.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. I need to advertise for bids for the purchase of Gemini Headliner Video System for the Lorraine County Sheriff's Department. I'd publish in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on October 24th and 31st, 2001.
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd like to approve the distribution of Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District Community Grant Applications for the year 2002. These programs divert recyclables and yard waste from the landfill, leaving valuable space in the landfill for materials that cannot be recycled. All communities did apply for funding for 2002, with the exception of the Village of South Amherst and Camden Township, Kipton Village. Without these communities, the Solid Waste Management District can still offer recycling opportunities to over 95% of the county population, a stipulation set by the Highway EPA. The total award of the 2002 district grants will be $1,441,198.58. This figure is $48,410.42 less than last year, which is due in part to the change in census figures and the Camden Township, Kipton Village, and the Village of South Amherst decision not to participate. The district would like to notify participating communities in order than November 1st, 2001. Mr. Billman, the Solid Waste Management District Director, has reviewed and recommends approval.
I see that Sally Pacora is here. Sally, would you like to briefly summarize this issue if there's anything further that you care to add other than what's on the agenda? And also tell us what your official title is.
Sally Pacora, Project Manager, Lorraine County Solid Waste Management District. We are tasked by the plan to provide financial assistance to the communities for the recycling and waste reduction programs. So, that's basically what this grant program is all about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will move for approval.
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
I would just like to comment that there was some concern raised earlier this year by several of the townships that their grant amount might be reduced and I hope that this will be good news overall because it's, according to what it says here, this figure is only $48,000 less than last year. So, I hope that that is helpful to the many political subdivisions that participate in this recycling effort.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd like to approve the fiscal year 2002 Small Cities Formula Grant Agreement in the amount of $437,000 and authorize the President to execute on behalf of the board.
I'll so moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd like to award contract to Maricut Coring and Sawing Incorporated of Vermont, Ohio in the amount of $29,473 for the City of Amherst Old Post Office Rehabilitation Project, which is a Community Development Block Grant fiscal year 2000 funded project. The engineer's estimate of cost was $33,500. This was the lowest and most responsive bid received complying with specifications. Formula grant funds will be provided in the amount of $27,200. The City of Amherst will pay the difference, which is $2,273. The Lorraine County Community Development Department and the City of Amherst have reviewed and recommends approval.
I'll so moved.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Mr. Twining, do you have any comments on this issue?
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Ron Twining, Director of the Community Development Department, T-W-I-N-I-N-G. This was a bid project and it's the last one for that formula year that we have bid out, so we will have completed all projects at this point. The engineer's estimate was for $33,500. Our portion all along, or the county's CDBG portion, was below that and the, at 27-2, the City of Amherst has provided us with a letter agreeing that this contract be awarded for this amount submitted and that they would pay the difference, the $2,273. It is our recommendation that this be awarded.
Thank you. Questions?
If the project goes over, who picks up the difference?
That's what's going on. Any change orders for additional work will still fall upon the City of Amherst to pay. So, they're paying the $2,200 or $2273 and if any additional work is warranted, you will be asked to approve the change order, as will the city, but they will pick up the cost.
Thank you, Melanie.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd like to issue a notice to proceed letter to the Osterland Company of Cleveland, Ohio for the Middle Avenue Reservicing Project effective October 22nd, 2001. This contract was awarded by Resolution Number 01-923 adopted October 4th, 2001.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd authorize a joint Ohio Public Works Commission application with Grafton Township for the Chamberlain Road Project. Grafton Township would like to apply for funding and reserving a section of Chamberlain Road, which includes the county number 0049. This is a narrow-beam, steel-beam concrete decked bridge which needs to be widened and redecked. The trustees have included the bridge work in their application. The estimated cost is $84,000 with 74% Ohio Public Works Commission funds, which equals $45,998, and 26% local funds at $21,840. The funds are available in MBGT accounts. The county engineer has reviewed and recommends approval.
I'll so moved.
I'll second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd like to approve and enter into agreement on behalf of a Domestic Relations Court and Swank Motion Pictures License Agreement in the amount of $350 for a period of one year. Swank Motion Pictures Incorporated, a copyright licensing firm, has discovered that the detention home has been showing copyrighted films without a license agreement. Showing copyrighted movies at detention facility is a technical copyright violation. The county has entered into a similar agreement like this with, for the county jail several years ago. County Prosecutor's Office has reviewed and recommends approval.
I'd like to thank the Prosecutor's Office for keeping us out of trouble. I will so moved.
I'll second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I've had similar problems with this type of activity. When I reviewed these contracts personally, is there other avenues that people can come after us on this? Because I remember when we had a music issue, some of these contracts only protect us from the songwriters, but not the actual companies that provide it. I mean, with this type of, I know it's only $350, but does this protect us from, for the copyright from the movie studios or is there any other contracts, any other union, like, you know, the Actors Studio or anybody else that could get us? I mean, you know.
Well, Bob Flanagan looked at the Commissioners. He indicated to me that it does, but I'll check on that.
It's all encompassing, do you think?
Right.
Okay.
I'll check on that.
Okay, that's, because once, it's almost like, once around the announce, next, you know, we'll get a couple more letters and just to show some videotapes, so. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Blair? Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd like to approve and enter into contracts on behalf of the Lorraine County Children and Families Council for the provision of community-based, family-focused programming through the implementation of the nurturing parenting program by Catholic Charity Services of Lorraine County in the amount of $34,446 and the It Ain't Love Program by Lorraine County Safe Harbor or Genesis House in the amount of $25,770. Monies are available from the Child Trust Fund. Contracts will be retroactive to July 1st, 2001 and run through June 30th, 2002. We also need to authorize the President to execute on behalf of the board.
Mr. Juan Molina Crespo, the Director of the Children and Families Council, is here. Would you like to address this issue, Juan? Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Juan Molina Crespo, J-U-A-N-M-O-L-I-N-A-C-R-E-S-P-O. These dollars are dollars that come through the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services. However, and thankfully, they're not TANF dollars, as you're used to hearing me come up here and plead my case for the TANF dollars. These dollars are much less restrictive. The dollars are an award. We received a two-year award. These are just one-year contracts, however, we'll be reviewing these contracts at the end of this fiscal year and then make a recommendation next year for the second-year award. I would like to mention just a little bit about the It Ain't Love Program, because I could see where maybe there were some raised eyebrows. But basically, what it does is that there is an educator that is employed by Genesis House that will go out to the Lorraine County school districts, primarily talking with seventh and eighth graders as they begin their dating relationships and that sort of thing as young people. And it's basically to make them understand how is it that you recognize an abusive relationship early on in that dialogue, early on in that relationship. It also helps them to understand the media's influence in terms of the gender roles that is placed on young people through the media. Helps them to learn some problem-solving skills and how is it that you dialogue with the member of the opposite sex to try to resolve potential conflicts in that relationship. So, it's a very good program. I've seen the curricula. We've worked with them in the past and we've had some very good results with them. The parent nurturing program through Catholic charities, basically what we'll be doing is teaching alternative to, alternative to parents in terms of where they're at in their developmental levels. What's an alternative to shaking, hitting, or yelling at a child at the same time we want to be able to reprimand them, reprimand the child? But there are alternatives to doing that. We look at the expectations of parents, the, try to get them to have empathy with the needs of their particular, of their children, and also appropriate responses to that child's behavior. So, those are the programmatic deliverables.
Thank you, Juan.
Good job.
I'll so moved for approval.
I'll second.
Any more questions? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Comments for force, Mr. Cortez?
I have one quick issue this morning. It's an older issue that we discussed a few weeks ago and it was having to do with funding the sanitary engineers department. As you may recall, we made some modifications to the rates to put the department on a more self-sufficient basis and to provide for operations, repair, and maintenance monies that we were lacking in that department, because we were expending all funds mainly in the operations. At that point, I presented you with a study that indicated that we needed to provide some additional funding to that department for planning. We had a discussion on the matter and I was sent back to talk to Mr. Conney about what some of our plans were in those areas. A few things have happened since then. We've received some Ohio EPA approval to begin working on the package plans. I have plans here for some new pumps at the pumping stations, some aeration equipment at some of the package plants and so forth. So, permits are coming through to do some of the work. And once again, I'm here to discuss with the board funding that department with a $50,000 stipend from the general funds that we continue doing planning and bring back more plans like this to you to do more work at those package plants with the ultimate desire of moving most of them, or as many as plausible, onto main sewer lines. If there's any questions, I would be prepared to discuss those with you.
So, the issue before us is an allocation of dollars for this year?
Yes, it'd be an allocation of $50,000 to do, to continue doing planning work and bring back issues that need to be resolved before this board. Once again, you'll have the ability to approve those plans when they come back here and decide whether we want to move forward with that work, but we do need to, funding to go out and start doing the planning now for these jobs.
Okay. I think the request was for a five-year commitment?
It was, Commissioners. It was for $50,000 for five years. I thought possibly if I limited my request to an individual year of funding, or maybe you would be more generous to make it a five-year, but place it under every year it has to be under review for consideration, I might be able to gain an advantage to moving this issue forward.
Now, you're talking, now what are you talking about? Which package plants are you talking about? What's the $50,000 going to be used for?
Well, it's going to be used for planning, additional planning. This is some of the planning that's been done.
Right, but for which package plants? Because I have an issue with the one.
I know you have an issue with the one. And so, for clarification for the public, Mr. Moore has discussed with me on several occasions his desire to attempt to put in a drought-free farming system, or otherwise known as the Schaefer system, on one of the package plants. And I will be addressing that with Mr. Conney and I recognize the direction you want to go with it.
But how am I to know that the $50,000 is going to go directly into this package plant and then they're going to say, ah, you know?
You don't.
Well, as I was going to make you say, we're allocating, we're appropriating $50,000. Now, any spending of the money comes back to this board for approval, does it not?
Correct.
Yeah, but these things have come before us before where they've already had the ball in motion and we're almost put to the wall in this.
Well, that's correct. But those, those issues have been changing over the last few months. We definitely have a great deal of cooperation coming out of the sanitary engineers department, and we have a reinvigorated effort at moving forward with projects that have languished for quite some time. What I will do is I will share your desires. You are in charge of the sanitary engineers department. It is a Commissioner's department that has been overseen by the county engineer under your auspices, and I will make your desires known, and I'm sure that we'll gain the necessary cooperation to move in the direction this Board wants to go.
I just, okay. Because my main concern is this would be a good example, to prove that a system like this can work, and we can stop dumping into the creeks and lakes, so.
To kind of piggyback on what you said, and when we discussed this issue a couple weeks ago, I asked Ron Twining to comment on this as well, because the planning aspect of countywide sewer service was part of one of the recommendations that was made in the comprehensive land use plan update. Ron, could you, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you addressed the issue very well. That was one of the recommendations. Could you just restate what the recommendation was, so that we might plan before it's raining? Like, you know, it wasn't raining when they built the arc-type thing?
July thirteenth, two thousand, the Board of Commissioners approved the Lorraine County Land Use Plan, and there were thirteen initiatives that were addressed as needing to be addressed over the next five years. The number one and number two of those thirteen priorities was to create a system of dealing with sanitary sewer needs in Lorraine County, primarily talking about the unincorporated areas. And that's not to provide sewer throughout the entire county, but rather to develop a systematic approach to dictate or establish where we want to have sewer lines go and to facilitate the implementation of a strategic set of sanitary sewer improvements. That's not to imply countywide. Along with that, it was clearly tied to the sanitary needs is that Lorraine County, at the same time, they're addressing sanitary, must address storm sewer, because those two issues go hand in hand. Those are the last remaining utilities and economic development generators that we need to be mindful of. So those were the number one and two priorities of the thirteen that were identified in the two-year effort putting together the county land use. Does that hit your point?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much for that synopsis.
Once again, Commissioner Moore, I will drive home this Board's desires on how we want some of these issues dealt with.
Well, at least get a proposal. I mean, I've been told there's a developer that might even pay for this system if they can get the system. So if, you know, my concern is we can make it, have somebody else pay the cost.
Right.
And we get the thing going from the, well, I don't think the EPA is too keen on this. I think Mr. Conney said in about ten or fifteen years, these systems will be, they should be shut down, so.
Well, we hope to be out of the package plant business, you know, within the next ten years.
Right. So this would be a good step? We could be one of the first in Northeast Ohio to?
Certainly. And it starts with a feasibility study, it starts with a plan, it starts with bringing the parties together. So I understand your desires. Obviously, you would like us to address your desires before we do anything else.
No, no, no. I'm just, we've had this discussion.
I know.
Well, speaking about this type of system you're talking about, it doesn't just deal with sanitary, though. They deal with storm drainage as well and retention.
Correct.
And they've got some wonderful models that was visited a couple of years ago by various people from Lorraine County in Naperville, Illinois. And seeing is believing.
I agree.
And I think that there are some opportunities, so, but we won't know unless we look at it.
So you just want to ask for fifty thousand, or?
Well, the proposal was for fifty thousand for five years. I'll settle for anything I can walk out of the room with. So if it's, if you want to make it fifty thousand, five years, subject to annual review and approval, or you want to make it fifty thousand for one year, that's the prerogative of the Board. Recognizing that, we'll be right back here in January.
Well, that's fine. I'm just, my main thing is I don't think, there's a lot of unanswered questions, and maybe those fifty thousand will help, and if it fixes, I mean, we need to get the ball rolling, and all, what, we have six?
Yes.
Package plants. We need, we don't want to stop the good jobs, the momentum that we have going on right now, so. I mean, I don't think, I mean, we could probably revisit it again later. Is that, I mean, I don't mind, I don't want to stop the momentum that we got, the positive momentum, I should say.
Well, so what is, do you want to make a motion?
Well, he wants, well, okay, I'll make the motion to?
Appropriate?
Well, we can, we're not appropriating, we're just, what's he looking for? What are you looking for?
Well, I don't think I'll need it.
Well, because you said we'd have control of the money once we?
Well, we will. What I recommend we do is we transfer fifty thousand dollars to the sanitary engineers department. I'm not sure he's going to put it, what county's going to put it in. I don't, I'm not going to ask for any new appropriation. I believe that I can move some money from capital.
Improvements?
Right. I think I have, we're coming towards the end of the year, and I can juggle a little money in the capital improvement accounts.
Well, it's okay, but you still have to appropriate that money after you?
John, can we make a direct transfer, or do we have to make an appropriation?
First, we would have to make a transfer, and then, once the cash is moved on the transfer inter-fund, there would need to be an appropriation or set aside of that money prior to any expenditure.
We can do that to our regular transfer and appropriation process based upon this resolution.
That's, that's correct.
Well, can't we not make this resolution be in fact the document that does that?
You're still going to have to some, well, I guess you could. We can make special documents and bring those individually for signatures. Is that suitable for you, John?
Transfer and appropriation are the key concepts and actions. And I think we're seeing the same thing.
Okay.
Then the spending, then the spending would come later prior, pending the Board's approval.
Just in the future, could you, when you bring this through, when it says, I don't want it to say, I want to make sure when that fund comes through for approval, then, I want to make sure that's the one that says, that was the one that we allocated today.
I could set that aside and do that.
Okay, just so that I know, because I don't want it to be in a general sanitary fund, and then I'll say, oh, it's already in the budget, it's already in, you know, I want to make sure.
Okay, okay, we can isolate that.
Okay, that way, you know, if it comes in a stack, I want to make sure.
Well, I don't think it'll come in a stack, John. What I'd like, if we do a resolution today, I'd like both of those prepared today for the Commissioner's signature, so we conclude this issue with today's business, if you can accomplish that.
If we have?
Well, you can fill out the transfer and the appropriation form, and they can sign them today, right?
Right.
And that, this way, it doesn't get buried in a stack anyway.
If the resolution is passed here for that action, then we could simply attach that, your action today as a resolution to the paperwork and move it to the Attorney's Office.
But it's going to come through our office when it gets spent, though, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's what, I guess that's what I'm asking.
Right, but it'll come through, it'll come through under the sanitary engineers. You have it broken out by the Department of Expenditure, you'll see it.
Okay.
Okay?
It's on the law, Canada.
Okay. So I guess I'm asking for a resolution for a transfer and appropriation of fifty thousand dollars to the sanitary engineers department. The fund that it's going to in the sanitary engineers department will be identified on that paperwork. It also is my intention to take that fifty thousand dollars from the capital improvement accounts.
Capital, okay. I'll so move.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Thanks.
That concludes my issues.
Well, I just have this question. What time will we talk about an appropriation for next year, because we're in the budget process now?
Well, my instructions to Mr. Conney for next year are going to be to submit it with his normal requested budget, and then we can talk about it during the, throughout the budget process. And maybe that's how we should handle that every year.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the main point here is that all appropriations expire, go to zero on midnight, December thirty-first, so there's kind of a built-in checks and balances, where those items would also automatically have to be reviewed to be re-resurrected later, so.
Okay.
December thirty-first is a key date.
Does that answer your question?
I think so.
Okay. Assistant County Prosecutor, Mr. Ennis?
I have a few litigation issues that I need to update the Commissioners about at some point in time. It's not urgent, you know, you don't need to do it today unless it's convenient for you, so, just so you know, at some point when you have an executive session and it's convenient, I need to give you an update on some litigation issues.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner's report?
Yep. I was being with Dr. Church regarding the Glide program, and we haven't, it seems to be moving without our board members on there. What's going on?
Well, it's a good question, Commissioner, and I think that ad hoc, Mr. Twining has stayed rather active with him. He was one of the initial pioneers working with the College on Glide. Dr. Church?
Mr. Cordez, Elizabeth is having a hard time hearing you. She's waving at me.
I apologize.
I thought she just liked you.
And Shirley, too, but I didn't see her.
Dr. Church sent over some correspondence requesting that we make some Glide appointments, and his view was that he wanted our appointments to be representative of government, that he wanted, you know, government people on that Board to be able to bring that flavor, that experience base to the overall Board being incorporated over at Glide. For various reasons, we just haven't made our appointment, and Glide has met two or three times now, Ron, and we still have not, twice, and we still have not made our appointments to Glide, and they're getting a little agitated. It's been on the agenda and off the agenda, and I don't have a suitable answer to why this Board hasn't acted upon that, but we definitely need to act upon getting our Glide appointments made.
Do we have the three appoint, the three appointments today?
Ron, three appointments that were recommended by Dr. Church, would you like to speak today?
And if I may be as bold, just for public information, the Glide Board will consist of nine total members, three of which to be appointed by county government, the county commissioners representing government. Three members will come from the county chamber, representing business interests in Lorraine County, and three final members will come from the community college, representing the educational need. And that's the three structures that have set up Glide to help here. The three names that have been suggested for appointment by the Board of Commissioners to represent government would include Mr. Cordez, county administrator, myself, representing the economic development interests in Lorraine County, and Fran Migliariano, which is the Governor's Rep. out of the Cleveland's Office on Economic Development. And Fran has agreed to serve on this, to give us a regional perspective from government standpoint, and also some possible funding from the state of Ohio.
Okay. We've got, we've got to kind of help it out, get the lead on this. Without the Glide out, I just want to make sure. It sounds like now we've dropped the ball, so is there a way we can get this off our table and get it back?
Well, yes, Commissioner, you can make the Glide appointments today.
Okay, then I, well, I recommend, I'd say so moved, but I'll make a recommendation for Glide appointments for Jim Cordez and Ron Twining, and is it Fran, who?
Migliariano.
And that's what Dr. Church talked about?
Yes.
Okay. I'll so move.
I'll second. There ought to be a term.
These are, yeah, these are three-year appointments for that, as it stands. That might be modified, because the way it was originally established with all of the appointments, that in essence, three-year appointments, and it would end all at the same time, I think we've already talked about staggering those. So when that staggered notion comes back, we'll come back and inform the Commissioners and make sure that you have an understanding of how that staggering will work.
Well, the main thing is the county's now represented, which is what is important for me, so.
Correct.
Thank you, Ron. Madam Clerk, will you call the Board?
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
That's all I have for my report.
Okay. I just wanted to briefly tell you about a meeting that I went to last Friday evening. Really, it was a dinner, and it was sponsored by, well, it was the Cleveland and George Gunn Foundations did the inviting, but it was to make a presentation of the vision of regional open space opportunities that have been identified by the Northeast Ohio Regional Parks Consortium, which consists of the park directors and planning staff from the park districts of eight counties. And they have been working for the past three years studying open space and opportunities in Northeast Ohio, and together they have identified exciting possibilities for linking existing parklands and protecting river corridors. And each of us who attended the dinner, and I attended with Dan Martin, who's our Metro Parks Director, were given these wonderful maps that identify the areas, and then some hoopla on the back. So I think it's a really exciting thing that they're working on, and it kind of fit in with the Nowaka meeting on earlier Friday, where they talked about the Cleveland Inner Belt, a major investment study, and that Cleveland Inner Belt has been in operation for about forty-one years, and they're planning now, doing a major investment study to evaluate various solutions to the inner belt central viaduct corridor problems. And the inner belt and its associated network of bridges and ramps will require reconstruction within the next six to eight years. So one of the things, the two may come together in the planning process, because what they're talking about down in the inner belt is restoring some of the traffic lanes for green space and walking and bicycling, and this would fit in well with this plan. So I just think that it's an exciting opportunity. There's some good things going on, and our county is part of it, and anybody wants to look at that further, it's, together with a green ribbon, it's here for review. So that concludes my report.
Okay, old business. I have two items. We need to approve and enter into agreement between the Board of Commissioners, Lorraine County Engineering, City of Lorraine, and the Village of Sheffield, to participate jointly in funding the engineering and construction costs for the rehabilitation of State Route six eleven from the city of Lorraine's East Corporation Limit to Eddy Road in Sheffield Village by Ohio Department of Transportation, as authorized by and in accordance with the Highway Rights Code, section fifty-five, three, five point fifteen. Said project will include widening to three lanes, paved berm installation, drainage setback, drive aprons, guard rail, and other incidental items. The project will be expanded to include an additional bike path if the engineer is able to secure grant monies to cover the local share of the county, city, and village for such an addition to the project and does not delay the project. Projected cost of such a project would be four hundred and seventy thousand dollars for engineering and three million sixty-one thousand dollars construction, with the local share of said costs being one hundred percent of the engineering and twenty percent construction. Need to authorize the President to execute on behalf of the Board.
Mr. Cordez, we've had this matter on hold.
Yes, we have. I had, I have had considerable dialogue with Mayor Anderson. I am in receipt of ordinances and orders from the city, from the Village of Sheffield, agreeing to participate in this project. I also am in receipt of a signed contract from the city of Lorraine, agreeing to participate in this project. We are the last leg, so to speak. Once we make our commitment, all three parties will have agreed to move forward with this project. I further had discussions with Mayor Anderson about some of the on-again, off-again nuances with their relationship and dealings on this issue with the city of Lorraine. I will be going to their council meeting on Monday night to speak with them and council, with council and the mayor, if necessary, to try to keep this project on track. There is some minor amount of resentment, I believe, developing in the Village of Sheffield concerning this project, and I don't want to lose this agreement at this late state. So I want to continue to move forward. I ask that we go ahead, approve this, enter into the agreement, once again reaffirm our support for this project and the need for this project for the benefit of the whole county, and I'll be able to take that out there Monday evening with me and make sure they understand that we're fully behind this project.
We've already approved the concept of it. What this action is, is approving the actual agreement.
That is correct, Commissioners.
And the agreement was, the agreement that I saw was already signed by both Sheffield and Lorraine.
I believe it was signed by Lorraine. I'm not sure it was signed by Sheffield.
I thought it was.
We have a copy of their ordinance, but.
Oh, maybe I'm mistaken, but I thought.
I'm not positive either, Commissioner, but if it isn't, once it's signed today, I will take those copies out and have them signed Monday. And once again, this will just reaffirm our commitment towards the necessity for this project to move forward, and I will attempt to share that view with the folks out in Sheffield Village, that regardless of, you know, the on-again, off-again discussions concerning needs out there, that overall, that this project needs to go forward, and that we're behind it.
Questions?
I'll so move.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
To authorize the appointment of Jeff Folt as a member of the Lorraine County Board of Mental Health for a four-year term effective October eighteenth, two thousand and one, expiring? Health for a four-year term effective October 18th, 2001, expiring October 17th, 2005.
This was on hold from last week. Mr. Ennis provided us some information. Did you get a chance to review that?
So I'm comfortable with them.
Commissioner Blair, the original issue on the appointment was, there's complications sometimes of the regulations with appointments to boards like the Mental Health and the MINDD Board, but I have reviewed the material that Mr. Ennis provided, and I don't see anything in the regulations that preclude the appointment. And I'm simply speaking to the regulations at this point.
Do you have any further comment, Mr. Ennis?
No, again, my original concern arose because of the fact that appointments to health board-related areas have a whole special statute that is much more restrictive than appointments to other boards. So I wanted to make sure that was complied with.
Thank you.
So moved then on the appointment?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Any other old business?
Think it's worth mentioning?
Sure, go ahead.
I believe this, you might have to run with us after I start talking. I believe on Monday you put together a how to handle anthrax and other biological agent threats, and this is posted, is this posted throughout the whole county right now?
Right.
What I want to let people know is if they're interested in this kind of document, maybe you can provide ways to getting this document.
Certainly. I'd like to take credit for it, but Tom Kelly prepared all the information and was up to brief the supervisory team on Monday and educate them so that they can bring that word back to their folks in the workplace. This document's been provided throughout the building. We specifically paid extra attention to our folks in the mailroom, who are the first recipients of our mail coming into the building. The information, if the public wants some, is available with Ms. Strozak. Her phone number is 329-5760. I'm sure that she'll be more than willing to accommodate anybody that needs any of that information.
It's a great document if anybody needs it, so, good job.
I like the heading. It says, "Do Not Panic."
Yep.
I think that's important, too. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Moore.
Any other old business? New business?
None.
I've none.
Just have the notation of the executive session we already mentioned.
Okay.
What a correspondence?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Yes, Shirley Johnson?
Shirley R. Johnson Overland, I just want to be sure that everybody knows about your board correspondence, H. Number One. That's a very important issue. I don't know what, it has to do with the decrease in mental health treatment and so on for people who now are being treated in nine psychiatric units. This is the first time it's come to my attention by reading it here. This is a very large issue that affects not just patients and families, but the whole communities. And I, do you know where the town meeting might be held for this, for Lorraine County? It says only at hospital sites.
Roxanne, could you bring the letter out and read the letter since the question has been asked?
This is really a very important issue.
I think this is just the beginning, though, and I think it has to deal with the budget cuts at the state level, and we have received some other communication this past week from the County Commissioners Association, warning of even more dire consequences, most specifically with talk about the legislature perhaps reducing and/or canceling our local government funds, and that doesn't affect just the county, that affects the cities and the townships and villages who are also our partners. I believe this is just the first salvo.
Well, we've had a long time curtailment of mental health facilities and the releasing of patients into communities. That's why we, one of the reasons why we have such a large number of homeless and people in our criminal justice system, and this would be, from what I see, the last straw. Funny, I didn't mean to laugh.
No, and I appreciate that. The letter that Mrs. Johnson is referring to is from NAMI, which is the Ohio's Voice on Mental Illness, and the issue is a critical debate currently underway in Columbus that will have a profound effect and impact on the community. The Ohio Department of Mental Health may consider a proposal that would lead to the closing four of the remaining nine psychiatric units. If this would happen, it would force the release of persons with severe mental disabilities home to their families, who are ill-equipped to deal with the symptoms of this illness. If any family members are not willing to take on this responsibility, these people most likely will become homeless or end up in jail. In the next several weeks, ODMH will announce a series of town hall-type meetings to be held at these hospital sites and give local citizens an opportunity to voice their opposition to this plan. The letter says, "For more information, please contact Harry Russell, who is the executive director," and a phone number was given at 614-224-2700, or their website, www.namiohio.com. And Mr. Russell concludes his letter with, "When the meeting schedule is released, I will make that available to you. In the meantime, if you have any questions about this, please do not hesitate to call your local ADAMH/CMH director or this office." And NAMI is listed as the Ohio's Voice on Mental Illness in 747 East Broad Street, Columbus, Ohio. The date of this letter was September 28.
I just want to reemphasize the importance of this issue and hope the media will give it the attentions to the people who will be aware of it.
Thank you very much, Shirley Johnson. The next issue that I would like to just give a little background on, I see that there are at least three members of Lorraine City Council in attendance, Councilman Rico Reveran, Councilman Ann Molnar, and Councilman Stan Siniker was here, and Rico sent a letter to the Commissioners on September 27 regarding a problem with dust from Consumers Builders Supply Company. And I also see that Mr. Jeff Rydel, who is the owner, I believe the owner of Consumers Builders Supply, is here, and it appears in the information that was presented to the Commissioners that there is a dust problem there. And when I received the letter from Mr. Reveran, I forwarded it to Ken Pierce, who is the Lorraine County Health Commissioner, and my office has had conversation with Mr. Pierce. And is Mark Smith here from, thank you, Mark? And again, this morning, the message that I received is, and I will read a letter to you dated May 14th, 2001. It was addressed to Commissioner Vasey, and it is from Mark William Smith, who is a registered sanitarian at the Health District, and it says, "This letter is in response to your letter dated May 9th, 2001, to Mr. Ken Pierce, Health Commissioner, Lorraine County General Health District, regarding the Consumers Builders Supply Company located at 2509 North Ridge Road in Sheffield Township. This office is informing you that the Ohio EPA has statutory authority and jurisdiction over fugitive dust emissions at the Consumer Builders Supply location. The Ohio EPA issues permits and investigates complaints regarding excessive dust emissions. All complaints should go directly to the Ohio EPA at the Twinsburg office, phone number This office will gladly assist residents by forwarding their complaints to the Ohio EPA," and the letter concludes, "If you have any questions or comments, please feel free to contact this office any weekday between 8:00 and 4:30 a.m.," and it's signed by Mark William Smith. I received this, a copy of this letter this morning when my office contacted the Health District to verify someone's being in attendance. I'm not quite sure how the Board of Commissioners should proceed on this issue, since we don't have jurisdiction, but we have had a request from these council people to at least be made aware of the issue. And Mr. Rydel is here this morning. Mr. Smith, do you have any comments that you'd like to publicly make? And if so, would you come to the microphone? Perhaps you would like to give a little history about your knowledge of this issue?
Mark Smith, Lorraine County Health Department.
Thank you.
Basically, as stated in the letter, we have received numerous complaints from residents in the city of Lorraine. Those complaints were forwarded to the Ohio EPA. Just a reminder to residents and council people, which they're well aware of, and the township trustees, that the Ohio EPA does have jurisdiction over this matter. The complaints are for dusty emissions. I talked with Jim Verries, the inspector from the Ohio EPA in Twinsburg this morning. This past summer, he has not received any complaints from the township trustees regarding dusty emissions from Consumers Consumer Supply Building. He said that he had spoke with Mr. Rydel. If there are further complaints, or if the situation does become worse, that the complaints will be forwarded to Columbus, Ohio, to their prosecutor down there. I know they want the Health Department involved, but there's nothing we can do to enforce law or anything in this matter. It is through the Ohio EPA. That's all I have, if you have any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Reveran, would you come to the microphone, please?
My name is Rico Reveran. I'm a Ninth Ward Councilman in the city of Lorraine, Ohio. And I'm here today not only as a resident and council member, but also representing the people that live in the area, which is near Consumers Builders Supply. And I can understand the situation here because the emissions are coming from Sheffield Township, which is in Lorraine County, directly into the city of Lorraine, the Ninth Ward, the southern part of Lorraine City. But what has happened for the last four years is that we have been getting a lot of emissions in the air that have become airborne from Consumers Builders Supply, I believe. And this sediment, or this airborne dust is settling in our homes, and, you know, in our swimming pools, in our paths, our yards, et cetera. And I have visited Consumers Supplies, and Mr. Rydel has been very cordial and helpful, and they even gave me a tour of the plant. And I know the EPA has been advised, EPA has contacted me, and Mrs. Vasey also was involved trying to help us solve this problem. And I know there were certain violations at Consumers Builders Supply, and I believe they have corrected some of them perhaps, but maybe not all of them. So the issue has become, not only with me personally, because I'm just around the corner from them, I don't know if they know that, and my wife is always complaining to me, "Rico, what are we going to do about this dust?" And I told her, "Well, we're trying to do the best that we can." And I guess the reality is, who's responsible? And according to Mr. Smith, I guess it's the Ohio EPA. And the Ohio EPA has been there, they have been there several times, trying to investigate the problem and trying to find solutions. But it's still happening, and I know they have made some corrections in the plant, and they want to be a good neighbor, and we want to be good residents. But nonetheless, we have had a problem for four years regarding this emissions of dust. And many of the people that live near this plant have come up with many symptoms which is affecting their health, such as asthma or other respiratory problems. And I'm not here to put the blame on anybody. I'm just thinking perhaps with the county, Health District, the Commissioners, the Ohio EPA, since the problem is existing in the city of Lorraine, the city of Lorraine is virtually, their hands are tied because, you know, the problem is emitting outside our borders. But basically, there's several residents that would like to address the commission regarding what has happened. I have filed a complaint myself personally.
With whom, please?
With the Ohio EPA.
Okay.
I personally, as a resident and as a councilman, have filed complaints regarding the emissions. Perhaps, I don't really, I really, I personally don't know what the solution is at this time, other than perhaps that they can build a huge wall there, which that might prevent some of the dust being emitted to the residents in my ward in my home. Perhaps they might be able to move part of their facility to another part of the county where it's not so close to a residential area. And maybe that was a mistake at the beginning, that they built this plant so close to a residential area, where these emissions are being airborne and settling in our homes. But I would like the opportunity to have some of the other residents, Mrs. Blair, address the Commissioners, if you allow them to, if that would be okay with you.
With your pleasure.
Well, we have a public speaking segment. We can't stop people from speaking.
They've been here waiting patiently for you to give them an opportunity of your time.
That's fine. We have another meeting scheduled for 11 o'clock, so if anybody wants to come and...
We can limit the speaking.
Please, to three minutes, so that everybody will have an opportunity. But before we do that, Mr. Rydel, do you have any comment that you want to make as...
I'm Jim Rydel Jr. I'm the risk manager for Consumers, and I guess this falls under my jurisdiction. I've met with the residents. We have met with the EPA. The problem seems to stem from exposed aggregate piles, sand that we use in our product. They need to be in open bins so we can load the conveyors. We water the roadways as the EPA requires. We have purchased at considerable expense a sweeper, much like your street sweepers, to sweep the yard to keep the dust levels down, and the EPA is satisfied that our level of fugitive emissions is well within their guidelines. We do have a problem because they are exposed to aggregate piles when you have a windy day like yesterday. And they have informed us, Jim Verries has informed us, that he understands the problem created by high winds, and that is not a consideration that the EPA is going to hold against us. As far as the health problem, the issue is silica sand. It's no different than what you would find on your beaches, and I can readily concede that on windy days, it must seem like you're living next to Lakeview Park. But apart from that, there isn't much else we can do at this time to control Mother Nature and the winds.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Rydel. Others who want to address this issue, please come forward. Come to the microphone, please. Sir, come to the microphone, please. You state your name, please.
My name is Alberto Aponte, and I live right across from Consumers. Listen to this. Lorraine Environmental Protection Agency conducted a surprise inspection of cement processing plant in Sheffield Township after receiving complaints from residents about dust. Very much dust, too much. We are living like people in the third world. Houses 80,000, 100,000 and over. The inspection held Wednesday. It was written on Friday, the 12th, May 12, 2000, the 2000 year. The inspection held Wednesday came a few days after a committee of Lorraine City Council heard complaints from about 10 residents. 10,000 residents. I got Hispanic blood, and if I get mad, excuse me. Consumers Builders Supply plant called their homes and cars, and maybe making them sick, maybe. We are sick! Even babies are breathing dust, because the dust is pushed by the air that goes into the houses through the frame of the windows and doors. And nobody, Mrs. Molnar is helping us a lot. But other people in the city of Lorraine and Sheffield Township, they should get together and do something about this. This is a serious business. Dennis Bush, environmental manager of the EPA Air Pollution Control Division, said the plant was in compliances on Wednesday, but he said it probably was because rain had kept the dust down. This, this makes no sense. This makes no sense! Bush said the EPA would look into the mobile crushing operation to evaluate whether permits were needed. "We are going to be keeping an eye on all concrete operations," Bush said. They keep an eye on the money, not the operations. Sometimes we need to remind that they have to treat the dust, Bush said. Also, some residents were concerned that inhaling the dust could harm their health. Bush said that the type of dust being generated probably posed more of nonchalance than a health problem, because the particles were too big to get into the lungs. Particles are not too big, the dust, this is dust! Why he mentioned particles over here? This was written in the year 2000, and still we are getting dust. Mr. Reveran says, Lorraine Councilman Riggo Reveran, who represents the area, said, "If the EPA found nothing wrong, they probably came when they were not doing any crushing." He is 120% right. See, the trouble in these cases are that people try to side with the people with money. And the middle class, they think the middle class. And no, listen, do something about it. Please, we need help. Reveron said the dust becomes thick. He has been able to collect samples. Me too. It floats and settles on the cars, garters, on the homes, and it is a greenish color to it, it has a greenish color to it, he said, and it settles in the lungs of every one of us. I got more. Mr. Monar, thank you. Thank you, thank you, because you are doing your job. I'm not going to read anymore. You know what's going on. Please, do something about it. Please, 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 and God bless everyone here.
Thank you, Mr. Aponte. Is there anyone else who wants to address this issue?
My name is Manuel Evis, Alavantacoma Avenue in Lorraine. I live a little bit further than Mr. Aponte, and what his main complaint is, of course, is the dust. I've been over his residence, where the dust was almost a quarter inch thick or better. And I don't blame him for being mad. And then during the summertime, that's almost every day, that that dust is there. At my home, there's a dust also, but not like his home. I don't know what the solution would be here, and I don't want to be in any with Consumers either. I want to be a good neighbor too, but something's got to be done about this, dust flying where our homes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I am Reverend Mr. John Sladkoff. I'm a permanent deacon at St. Vincent Paul Church. I live on 4716 Willow Avenue, and I venture to say I'm probably the oldest resident in the neighborhood. I've been there since the homes were built, 38 years now. I remember the day that they broke ground for putting up Consumers. We were told at that point, from the township trustees, that those were going to be homes in that neighborhood, and that we were not to be concerned. In the meantime, the plant went up. We were told then that there was nothing we could do about it, and that we should be aware that they're just going to be there and they're going to operate. This problem has been ongoing for many years. We're talking about the last four years. It's been an ongoing problem, and I realize that in the last four years, they've tried to comply with different, you know, different regulations that's been put on from the EPA. I too have called the EPA. That's on file with Jim Varies. I don't buy, I don't buy the idea that everything depends on which way the wind blows. I understand that, you know, when the wind comes from the south, there's probably nothing that can be done, but I just don't buy that. Because we should not, our lives should not be dependent on which way the wind blows. Our houses are, we've had to close all the windows in our houses, our cars, like you've heard, maybe one day, and they're covered with sand and cement. And the problem is not just all sand, and I don't believe that I should live, or if I lived on Lake Erie, down by the lake, that sand would be a problem. That's not the way I explain it, or understand it. I think that there needs to be a lot of things done. Watering down doesn't do any good. Where does the water run to? How do we manage that? How do we live with this in our neighborhood? I don't have the answer to that. All I know is, all of us in our neighborhood, we've all had to shut our windows, we've all had to call our children in on days when the wind is blowing from the south. All of us have grandchildren, if we're outside, and we're doing anything, if the wind is blowing right, you cannot, you cannot have any kind of activities outside because of the direction of the wind. So again, I don't buy the idea that which way the wind blows is which, how we do our family outings and so on. I have other problems with it. They started a crushing of cement over there. It sounds like a loud jackhammer in our neighborhood, and the dust coming from the cement is also another problem. So we're breathing in cement dust, we're breathing in sand, and so on, and so on, and so on. So I think this really is, it's been an ongoing thing, and it's getting worse. And we're told, we're told that they're going to water it down, and he bought a vacuum cleaner. The vacuum cleaner is for their area, not for ours. I've had them in the past, I've called over there, I've asked for somebody to call me back, they've not responded. So I would like to see something happen in the very near future, where they can be accountable for the dust and all the contamination that's in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend.
My name is Ann Molnar. I'm Councilwoman-at-Large for the city of Lorraine, 12306 East 31st Street. I personally am not afflicted with the dust, but I have been called to this area numerous times, and I have actually seen the dust in the house, on window seals, on the cars. It is very bad. I would like to direct a question to Mr. Smith from the Health Department. Mr. Smith, did you receive a copy of 48 peoples, 48 people who live in that vicinity that have various afflictions of asthma, lung cancer? Did you receive it, and you do not call this the Health Department? I think you'd better investigate that a little bit further, and I'm very disappointed. I believe that this commission should be able to help us, the Health Department. It is a county situation, but it is a health hazard for the city of Lorraine. So I'm going to beg you today to please try to help these people. I have been there, and I have seen it. And Mr. Rydel, I don't mean to put you out of business, but something has to be done. It's a very bad situation. So I hope that we can get some help from the commission. If not, then probably from the state, because this problem has to be resolved. People are sick, and I hope that you can help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Anyone else who wants to address this issue? We have five minutes before our next public hearing. Mr. Rydel?
I'm Jeff Rydel, and Jim's older brother, and just a couple of comments based on what we've heard today. The construction was in approximately '73 or '74. We are the third owner of the plant. It was built by another Lorraine County family, was operated by a Cleveland company, and we began operating there in 1986. The plant has substantially changed, and has addressed all the ongoing needs of the environmental regulations and so forth. And I agree with the people that, you know, we don't disagree with these folks that they have some health concerns, some personal health concerns, but much of South Lorraine and Sheffield Township was zoned industrial many, many years ago. Steel mills, threw shovel, you know, at that time, miles, industries. There's a foundry across the street. Somebody mentioned green today. We have nothing green that we do. The sand is brown. We don't disagree that on windy days, it becomes an issue with the sand. And I appreciate the concerns of our neighbors as well, but our people work in this environment, and we have, we have no health concerns, and they work in it, you know, 60, 65 hours a week. Our only concern is that we're being accused of a relationship between our corporation, our operations, and the health of the individuals is a health issue, but there's been no link established, and we're in a public forum without evidence. It's disparaging to our family business that's in its 94th year, and we've not had health concerns with our employees or neighbors. We operate a similar facility in downtown Lorraine, and have there since the 1930s. I will, I will say though, that as we approach this, that one of the previous speakers did address an issue which we consider to be the root cause of the nuisance, and that is that unfortunately, 30 years ago, there was not a regional perspective to zoning issues. And our operation is properly zoned and operating on a plant that was done by people prior to us, and that while the sand, it's not a nuisance for us and our other industrial neighbors, it is a nuisance perhaps to the residential world. And because it lies in the township and it boundaries the city of Lorraine, we understand the jurisdictional issue. Today, that probably wouldn't occur. But we are meeting all of the operational guidelines that we are aware of, and that Jim Varies has made aware of, for industrial operations. And to imply that there has to be zero dust on a 40-degree day is not the goal of the EPA, and it's an unrealistic goal. I would venture that we would like to sit down to the table and look at alternatives. We have participated in every community event. I was sorry to hear that the pastor was not responded to. That's not our nature, and I'm unclear, but I have voicemail on my phone, and so is my brother, and anyone that would leave us a message would get a returned phone call.
Thank you, Mr. Rydel. It's 11 o'clock now, and we have a continued hearing for this point in time. I believe that I would like to ask the clerk to forward a letter to the Ohio EPA stipulating the fact that these 11 different people, 10, were here at our meeting today, and they had discussion about this issue, and to ask them if there's anything they could do to assist. I don't know what else we can do. I realize the issue that the residents have put forward, and I also realize the comments of the representatives of Consumers Builders Supply. But the real issue here, I think, is one of jurisdiction, and as was pointed out when I first read this letter from Mark Smith, who is a register sanitarian, that this is, the issue is an Ohio EPA issue. Now, I think we need to continue to bring the concerns forward. If anyone has any suggestion about how to resolve the issue, we'd certainly be open to participating, but I think it's one of continuing dialogue. Do you have any comments, Commissioner?
No, I agree. I think half, a lot of times, the problems are just communication, and make sure everybody's talking and keeping that dialogue open. If we're going to send a letter to the EPA, maybe that's what we can include, is to see if there should be some, I think there needs to be continued dialogue, so.
Okay.
Include that in the letter, that would be fine, to bring all the parties together.
Mr.?
I see Mark's jumping up and down.
Mr. Smith?
Just to let you know, I talked with Mr. Varies today from the Ohio EPA, and he is more than willing to meet with residents, or city officials, or township officials. He explained to me today that he has never been contacted or informed about any public meetings for him to attend, but he said he would be willing to attend any meeting to answer questions.
Would it be appropriate for him to schedule a public meeting to discuss this issue?
I can contact him and get back with...
I think that that would be very appropriate, and I know our offices would be help, would be willing to help disseminating the information to all those who were in attendance today, if in fact he wants to. Maybe it's a little public education that needs to be done.
That's fine. I'll contact Mr. Varies and get back with the commissioners and the Lorraine City officials.
Thank you very much.
And the Sheffield officials too, because...
Township officials and Mr. Rydel.
Okay, thank you.
I have called Consumers, and the men that I mentioned, dust, they hang up. Sometimes they say nasty things.
I realize your concern, Mr. Aponte, I really do. And Ann, you've had your comments, you've been...
I just want to thank you for taking the time today.
You're very welcome. It's a community problem, so...
And I want to focus on the people who are putting the dust, and this is a help that you do. I know the EPA, we have numerous conversations with EPA, but that is a help to be speaking for putting the dust.
Mr. Smith?
To Mrs. Monar, I have been in contact with Jack Karowski from the city of Lorraine. In regards to illnesses to the residents, we have tried to start developing a form which would allow the residents' physicians to facilitate information to us so we could look at. There would have to be a release of medical information. We just can't go and get that information ourselves.
That's fine, but, you know, in this letter that we're requesting this meeting, it should be included, the other foundries that are nearby, because if it isn't Consumers, it could be other avenues. I mean, if you zero in on one company and the dust, and the issue could be another foundry, I think you should include all participants in that area, not just one. Because if the EPA comes out and says it might not be this one, then you're at a standstill. But if you can bring everybody to the table, I mean, everybody to the table in that area, you guys are going to probably be better off finding out where the issue's coming from.
I think Consumers is the only facility...
I thought there was a foundry. Is it?
It's the only facility.
Oh, okay. I thought they said there was a foundry that's...
It's west of the road, just east of...
It's just across the road? Oh, okay.
Thank you again for your comments and your attendance this morning, and Mark, if you could be in touch with our clerk as well, so we can have a, know what's going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, at 11 o'clock, we have a continued public hearing.
I think they need to set up their...
My own stuff, I'm...
Yeah.
Oh, I don't need that.
Do you want to share your body?
You want it?
Oh, yeah. So we would like to...
You want it? You want it?
Convene this public, continued public hearing, then? This is a continued public hearing regarding the proposed annexation of approximately 32 acres in Brown Hill Township to the city of Vermillion, Ohio. Garrett Murray is acting on behalf of the agent Thomas Caruso. I don't have a synopsis of the, I think we've continued this twice. Yeah. It's nice to see you back again, Mr. Caruso. Mr. Murray, he's our weekly visitor anymore. Garrett, do you want to comment? I have a copy of an October 18th letter that our Community Development Director has outlined regarding a great deal of work that's gone on by several parties to try to address the issue. Do you want to speak to that?
Yes, my name is...
Or whatever. Thank you.
My name is Garrett Murray, and my address is 120 East Avenue, Olyria. And the Lorraine County Community Development Director, Ron Twining, convened a meeting on September 26th, and representatives from the city of Vermillion, their engineer, their Safety Service Director, my client's engineer, my client was there, Wayne Maletti was there, Mr. Van Curran from Lorraine County Health Department was there, and certainly Ron Twining and Christian Brandon were there. So at this particular point, I thought that I would turn it over to Mr. Twining and let him sort of recap what came out of that meeting, and what has just occurred in the last two or three days.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Ennis, is it necessary? I didn't even go through the process of swearing people in.
I think at this point, we're just getting some preliminary information regarding resolution issues, so I don't think we're actually getting into testimony relevant to the...
Thank you very much. Mr. Twining?
Thank you, Commissioners. We were able to hold a meeting with the developer, the city, the county, the Health District, to talk about the obstacles that we are presented with this particular proposed subdivision head... having two jurisdictions reviewing the subdivision. The problem that the county has had frankly is there's no road access presently, so the Vermillion portion has to be developed in order to give us road frontage for us to consider development. What has resulted from this joint meeting that we held after the last discussion in front of the commissioners is we have agreed to several items so that this development, it's clear who the developer will need to submit, what portions of the development to, and what standards that will be judged by. As an example, the county engineer requires roads that are, if it's going to be 10 inches of concrete road, he, or if it's going to be a concrete road, he requires 10 inches of depth of the concrete. The city of Vermillion, on the other hand, requires reinforced concrete that's seven inches. The cost is roughly the same, but the method of installation and review is different. The end result is probably about the same. To the average person, it wouldn't make much difference, but to the developer, you know, and the contractors, it was going to cause some difficulty. So what we agreed to is going over every item that needed to be reviewed as a part of the engineering, the improvement plans and the subdivision review, and addressed each and one, each and every one of those items. There was agreement on all issues. As the example that I've presented, the roadway, the county engineer has agreed that we will accept seven-inch reinforced concrete streets, which is the Vermillion standards. All issues had been resolved that morning, in my opinion, with the exception of the issuance of the waste, or the individual wastewater treatment facility, that is to say, the septic systems that will be provided for each individual residence. During the last three days, we think we have clearly identified that issue, what the procedure will be if the portion that is currently in Vermillion remain in Vermillion and the portion that is currently in Brownhelm Township will remain in Brownhelm Township. This letter was prepared this morning and we have circulated or begun the process of circulating that. And to that end, there are, I think, six points that I would, with your permission, like to read to the audience. The first point is, OEP A offices have agreed that when there is a joint jurisdiction, as we have in this particular case, two communities, and it also involved two political jurisdictions, the city and the township. It further involved northeast Ohio EPA district and northwest Ohio EPA districts. But there is an agreement between OEP A that the, the OEP A or Ohio Environmental Protection Agency district with street, existing street frontage will take jurisdiction. Therefore, there has been agreement that northwest EPA will have jurisdiction from this point forward on this development, whether it's annexed or not annexed. The second point is, before you contact either Lorraine County engineer or the Erie County Health District, the developer needs to contact northwest now that he knows which EPA office he's dealing with, and he needs to submit their proposal for consideration and review by northwest EPA. And once that review has been completed, then he'll be responsible to, in the case of the Vermillion land, talk to the Erie County Health District, and in the case of the township, Brownhelm Township, he will need to go to Lorraine County Health District. The third point is Erie County Health District will review and process all permit requests for the individual home sewer disposal systems for the approximate 10 acres located within the city of Vermillion in accordance with the Erie County Health District and northwest EPA district policy and guidelines. The fourth point is Lorraine County will review and process all permit requests for individual home sewer disposal systems for the approximately, and there is a slight change to this, it's 22 acres located within Brownhelm Township in accordance with Lorraine County Health District guidelines and northwest EPA district policies and guidelines. It's important to note that Lorraine County normally deals with northeast. They have all agreed, again, as we stated in the first point, northwest will have their policies and guidelines implemented by Lorraine County in addition to the Lorraine County standards. Fifth point is, please be advised that Lorraine County is agreeing to allow northwest EPA district policy on off-site discharge. Northwest does not permit off-site discharge, northeast does. So we will be following the guidelines by northwest, not allowing off-site discharge, and that will occur throughout the entire subdivision. That portion that is in the city as well as the portion that is in the township. I continue in that point by saying therefore no off-site discharge permits will be issued based on that northwest policy. You need to understand that this will or may affect the number of permits that can be issued. The sixth point is, the letter does not imply or suggest the number of lots within either jurisdiction that will be issued. This is a standard statement until the actual developer has submitted the actual information to the appropriate body. He has an idea how many lots he feels he can accommodate, but several criteria must be evaluated in order to determine the actual number of lots. So we're saying that while the discussion centered around the existing proposal, it will still need to be evaluated in order to determine how many lots are going to be approved in the Erie County portion as well as the number of lots that actually will be approved in the Lorraine County portion, and that is standard in terms of how subdivisions are reviewed. I think with this, we have resolved the issue or come to agreement for the developer to understand and his engineer who the appropriate office will be and the standards that will be in this particular incident or development, the standards that will be applied. The city has been very helpful, the county has been very helpful, as has the county health districts and the two EPA district offices.
Sounds to me like you've done a yeoman's job. Thank you. Mr. Murray, then.
Can I ask Ron? When you read the letter, you said 10 acres. Is that a number three, but 10 areas or 10 acres?
10 acres that is in, there's probably a misprint, I'm sorry. We did that quickly. It's 10 acres approximately, I believe that it was in the city of Vermillion and there is 22 acres that are in the township.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Well, no.
It said 37 in here, that's why I didn't-
How many total acres?
Forty-two.
Forty-two acres.
So it'd be 32. Now-
So it's 32 acres approximately then in the township?
Now, is this just for this deal that you, that this is going to happen, or did you designate a whole area that this-
No, this is just for this particular subdivision that is proposed, that we have worked on and come to this agreement. It does not affect any other adjoining land with one slight exception. On the morning meeting when we all got together, there was concern that was raised by the city of Vermillion's Planning Commission that all of the existing roadway and proposed houses would dump onto city streets and they would take the brunt of the township traffic on their streets. They had made a request to take a look at removing some of that burden. We agreed, both the city and the county officials, that we would seek a resolution from the township, a resolution from the city, and we're coming to you next week seeking a similar resolution from the board of commissioners. They clearly have identified an area for a 60-foot wide easement or right-of-way for a future street and as the development in that area, the interior portions of that mile block, that we will not permit, any of the three of us will not permit development to occur within that right-of-way so that ultimately you'll have connections between Baumhart Road, this proposed development, and Klaus Road. And it's our hope that all three entities will agree to that reservation of that right-of-way so that somebody doesn't plop a house or a development on top of the right-of-way we can put a road in. The township has passed a resolution, the city has passed a resolution identifying the importance for reserving that right-of-way. We plan now, next week, to come to the board of commissioners and ask you to do that. That is pretty standard and we used to do that through the county thoroughfare plan. We are updating that right now and rather than waiting for the thoroughfare plan to be developed because of this particular case, we will ask for a resolution allowing us to join in that effort to preserve the corridor for that future street connection.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, Ron. Mr. Murray?
Yes, I'd like, on behalf of my client, I'd like to thank Mr. Twining because without his effort, this agreement, these agreements would not have been reached, also township officials and officials of the city. What I would like to do is, this morning would be to ask for a continuance until such time as I have a copy of the resolution passed by the township and until the county commissioners would pass their resolution reserving that traffic corridor. This started out by my client going to the planning commission and the planning commission of Vermillion being concerned about that traffic corridor. And they suggested an agreement from the county or that we annex, and that's how this all came about. So as far, what has been put on the table at this point, we're in agreement with. And when we get those resolutions, then we will be in a position to withdraw our annexation petition.
Okay. I, thank you. You personally will be here on December 13th at the commissioners' meeting for another annexation hearing for Olliria Township. Would it be-
I think there's one next week.
There are several.
November 13th or December?
It's December 13th. I, that would give us almost 60 days. You need that much time or you don't? I wasn't sure.
We don't need that much time, we'd like to.
Okay.
As soon as they pass the resolution.
Pardon me?
As soon as they pass the resolution.
Yeah, as soon as you pass the resolution. I'm going to be here next Thursday, I believe I'm going to be here on the next Thursday, December the-
November.
I mean, November, I'm sorry.
Second?
I think it's-
Well, you, there was two parts to this, though. The first part was we passed the resolution, there was something else.
Well, the township already has passed theirs, but I'd like to just see it.
Okay, so it's already done, all you need to do is get a copy of it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Are, is he going to be here in two weeks?
Next week.
Well, next week, it'll just be on our agenda.
I think I'm going to be here on the first of November regarding Yost.
All right.
So-
10:30?
That would be fine.
Okay. How about then, what's the date again? 11:01? Okay. I move that we continue this here, are you going to be gone?
No, I just think it's one hour in November.
Oh, okay. I move that we continue this hearing to November the first at 11:30 a.m.
Thank you, thank you very much.
See, what we're trying to do is get you guys here in December since we're bonding, hoping to get presents, you know, cards, that kind of stuff, but if we can get it done earlier. I appreciate, everyone's been working together it seems. I think this is a great example for another way to resolve annexation issues, so.
Dane Leinbach, Brownhelm Township trustee, do you have a comment?
Yes, ma'am. In addition to the information in regards to the fact that we have passed a resolution supporting the concept of this corridor across here, I had spoken with another of the property owners adjacent to Mr. Caruso's property and in line with this corridor and kind of explained to him, you know, what the concept was, where the idea came from and so forth, and he also indicated that he thought it wasn't a bad idea, you know, in a future reference perspective of, in light of the fact that there is already a high-tension transmission line running through there and you can't build anything under it, supporting the idea of putting a transportation corridor through there. So that's some other information that may be, you know, helpful in this whole picture here.
Thank you, Dane. I just think this is a marvelous example of political subdivisions working together and trying to help the developer, not impede him, even though it's taken us a little while. But at least the doors of communication have been opened. This is a good model for future reference too, Ron, in case we have other-
I think we had a couple more we can work on.
Yeah, wouldn't that be nice? Okay. Any other comments from anyone? I want to thank the city of Vermillion also, councilman, yes.
Greg Butchko, representative to Ward Five in the city of Vermillion. I also wanted to thank and commend Ron Twining, our administration, our service director and engineer, the developer, the township. This is, it just seems to be going in a direction that works for everybody right now. I also, just working together, it's been impressive. I also wanted to update you quickly on the actions taken by council or actually the actions that haven't been taken. The, on Monday night, Vermillion City Council made, we made a motion to suspend the rules on a resolution to rescind the offer of services. There was a little bit of discussion, we're fairly conservative about suspending the rules on that council body. And the comments were made by Mayor Davis and supported by council that allowing that to go to a second reading would carry the weight of, of information to the county to let you know that where the city seems to be going at this point with that. And again, thanks to everybody that's been working on this.
And thank you, Greg. Any other comments? Ma'am clerk, you call the roll, please.
Ma'am?
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you once again. I just, sometimes we, this was a positive this morning, thank you very much. I really appreciate it all. Conversation is healthy. We have some outstanding issues, executive session, perhaps to include litigation and personnel issues as outlined by the administrator and the prosecutor, so I will so move that we go into executive session.
Ma'am clerk?
Aye?
Aye.